Good evening. It is Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. It is 6:07 PM. Apologies for the delay. We had a lot going on tonight between lacrosse practices and Elm Street Band Concert and kids that needed to be shuffled all over the place before we could get going. So, tonight, we have our third edition of the budget. And we have Ms. Bagley here to help us out with the special education budget. So, I will do the roll call and then we will get started. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Giglio?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown will be joining us shortly. Ms. Ziem is not here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
And Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Okay. And we also have Dr. McKinney. I saw Dr. Sarpde. There she is. Dr. Sarpde. Mr. Parker's not here. We have Mr. Donovan. Ms. Carey's not here. And we have Ms. Bagley. Am I missing anybody else who will be participating with us this evening? Nope? Okay. In that case, I will...
Mr. Donovan has to go to the chair.
I was just going to turn it over to Mr. Donovan. I mean, you can have it, Dr. McKinney, and then hand it to him. All right, I'm done.
Okay. So, just to kick off the meeting and make Marcia wait a little bit longer. I just wanted to go through what I handed out tonight because there's a large volume of paper here. You should have a table of contents. And with that, there's the first set in yellow there. They're the currently budgeted positions. So, there should be seven different sheets. And it's various teachers by position, paras, secretaries, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the sheets lists all the positions in the district and the total labor dollars for those. So, you can pour through those when you have a chance.
Yes.
Can you hold that up again? Because I don't... It looks like that.
Yes.
I don't...
If you don't have one, I have extras here, so...
Okay. I don't think I have that one. Is it just a one cheater?
No. It should be a clip. There should be seven pages. They're all with a two, labeled with a two.
Oh, I have that. I put it in Section 2. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And then, there's the presentation tonight from curriculum, which will follow the special ed one. And then, there's the Section 7 items. That's tonight's presentation that you'll be hearing in a few seconds. And then, there's sort of the meat and potatoes of the budget. Be happy to go through page by page, but we won't do that right now. But the first one is basically the detail of the operating budget. Now, it's sorted by school. So, the first would be the first section's administration. On the left side, you can see then the special education. Then, it starts with the high schools and works its way down. So, that's how all the costs are sorted. And then, what you'll have for each, you'll have the actuals for 2021. And you'll have the... You see two budgets for this year. Well, actually, the adopted budget for '22, which is the year we're in now, and then the proposed budget. And then, there's a delta difference between the two. So, that's got all the detail in it. And the other larger document is the staffing detail. So, that is also sorted by building. Okay? So, after you've looked at those, if you have any questions, feel free. So, at this point, if there's no questions on that, we will turn it over to Ms. Bagley.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. First, I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you to all of our special education staff who are working in our buildings with our students. That includes our teachers, our paras, our related service providers, our nurses, for their extremely hard work this year. We face some seriously tough challenges this year, but we are working all together to meet those challenges. And I'm proud of the work that we do in Nashua. I also want to thank my special ed admin team, who you see in the audience here. They are the glue that holds us together. If it wasn't for them, we couldn't do our job. So, I sincerely appreciate all of their work and their support to not only me, but to all of our students and our staff in the district. We problem solve through dozens of issues every day, and we work hard to do what's best for our students. So, I'm very proud of not only my team, but the work that we do in the district as well. So, now, I'll go into my presentation. Currently, well, as of March 11th, we had 2,096 identified students in our district, ages 3 to 21. The chart on the right-hand screen shows you the number of students by identification in our schools. And the number of students, if you were to do quick math, add up the chart numbers, it doesn't quite equal to 2,096. And that's because not all of our students may be in our schools who are identified. We currently have 63 students in out-of-district schools. We also have students who may be attending private schools who are identified as in need of special education but are not within our Nashua school districts. Same goes for charter school students. If a student is identified and attends a charter school student, they wouldn't show up in that chart on the right. This is just quick explanation of what those... That chart was explaining, the abbreviations on the previous page. Those are the identification categories that are available to students in New Hampshire based on the New Hampshire state regulations. I'm happy to read each one, but I can quickly go through. And this is just a quick breakdown of the special education process. So, when a referral is received, anybody can make a referral to a school. The district has 15 business days to meet with the parents and determine if there's a suspected disability. Once parents have signed permission to evaluate, we have 60 calendar days to evaluate and meet with the parents to review the results. If the student is found eligible for special education, we have 30 calendar days to develop an IEP and meet with the parents to review that IEP. And then, once the IEP is agreed upon, we must propose a placement that's considered least restrictive environment. Unfortunately, vacations, worldwide health pandemics, weather cancellations do not interrupt those timelines. So, we are still responsible for meeting those timelines regardless of what's happening around us. So, this year, we're asking for an additional full-time teaching position at Brentwood Program, a Schedule 2 secretary at the Franklin Street School, and an audiologist contracted services. And I'll go into more details as we go through. This is a picture of our Brentwood students and staff who participated in Twin Day during Spirit Week. The Brentwood Program, as you all are aware, has been moved over to the Franklin Street Building. And this was taken in their cafeteria area. This was early on in the year, so students are all still wearing masks. But they all got into it, and we have a great group over there and great support system. So, we're asking for an additional full-time teacher position at the Brentwood School so that we can increase the number of classes that we provide to our students, specifically physical education and/or health, which are both graduation requirements, which we currently do not have staff on hand to provide. We outsource those credits or the ability to earn those credits. We currently have 19 students at Brentwood, and four of whom are from other districts. So, four students attend the Brentwood Program, and the district pays their tuition to us. We hope with the increase of the additional full-time teacher will allow for a greater variety of classes, and it will also mean that the students don't have to repeat elective courses. Obviously, there's far more information and words on the screen than I'm sharing, but I'm sure that you all can refer back to this. And I am happy to share anything and answer questions at the end. This is just some work that's been recently done at the Brentwood Program. The graphic arts teachers and the art teacher have put together these bulletin boards. And I'm sure if you saw the classrooms and the work that's being produced over there, it's very impressive. So, we're asking for an additional Schedule 2 secretary at the Franklin Street School because currently, there's only one secretary assigned to Franklin Street. All other schools have at least two secretaries. Currently, the enrollment at Franklin Street is 188 students, but we're expecting that to almost double once we move the rest of the preschool classrooms there. So, currently, the current secretary who is there is incredible. She's wonderful. However, it becomes a problem if she needs to leave her desk for any reason, which she's entitled to. If somebody comes to the door, they're not able to get in, or they have to wait, or they have to try and reach somebody else via phone, which can be a problem. And the current secretary is responsible... Has all the other responsibilities of the school secretaries, including registration, maintenance of student records. And our preschool population, we have enrollments happening quite often because as students turn three, they're eligible for services and registering within the school. So, that's a... It will become a much busier place once students, the preschool teachers and classrooms move over. And finally, we're asking for audiologist contracted services. The Here to Learn is the agency that we've worked with since 2016, providing audiology services to our students who are deaf and hard of hearing. Currently, in the district, we have 40 students who are on IEPs or 504s with a hearing loss. We tuition in many students into our program as well. And the audiology services are considered related services in students' IEPs, which means that we have to provide them those services if it's going to help them access their educational environment. So, a state-licensed audiologist provides training, provides consultation, technical assistance for students, hearing aids, or what we call HAT, Hearing Assistance Technology. Classroom acoustic analysis and evaluations as well are part of the contract that we're looking at. So, in summary, this breaks down the increase that we're requesting. The additional hours is money that we spend for after-school meetings, to pay our staff to stay after school, to meet with families if they're unable to schedule during the school day, testing during the summer. Because, as I explained in the process, it doesn't follow the school year calendar. It's a year-round calendar. So, if a student is referred in August, we have to follow the same process that we do if a student is referred in November. We also have some staff who need to... Students who require supervision while on school buses. So, we have staff who support the students on the school bus, and that's some of the extra hours as well. The contract services, the big piece there is the audiologist contract. We also have to provide... We have contract for tutoring and substitute sign language interpreters. If we have sign language interpreters who will be out for any reason, we have to try and provide a substitute sign language interpreter. And those, we don't have like substitute teachers. We have to go through an agency because they require specific licensure. We also, if we have contract service providers coming into our buildings, we have to provide... We have to have them fingerprinted, and so we also bear the cost of the fingerprinting. The memberships is for our school psychologists to be able to have a license to allow them to submit for Medicaid for our purposes, for reimbursement. That's a new, fairly new regulation that's come down. The only reason they need this specific license is so that they can bill Medicaid so that we can be reimbursed. And the out-of-district tuition, we're looking to increase by $100,000. Currently, our out-of-district tuition and our caseload is fairly small compared to previous years. But we've had some students age out, and during the COVID years, we didn't have as many referrals to out-of-district schools. However, that's on the rise again. So, we're looking at increasing that. We are... We do have a few students who will be aging out, but we still will need more. And that is the end of my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bagley. As always, we enjoy your presentations. I'm just going to open up the floor to questions. Ms. Bishop?
With Franklin Street being up and... Well, not up and going, but ready to be up and going full speed, are we looking at pulling in students from other districts and kind of making money off of their tuition supplements?
Yes. Our hope is that we can... In our preschool programs, we do have some students from other districts. But our hope is to expand Brentwood even further as we get the... Our growing pains out of the way.
Right. Okay. That was my one question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Ms. Bishop asked one of the questions I had. Last year, how many... Over the last several years, how many students have we had at Brentwood averaged?
We've... We can have up to 25 right now. We've varied, anywhere from as low as 14 all the way up to 20.
Okay. And so, we will max out at 25? That's as many as we'll be able to always have there?
Given the current number of teachers we have there, yes.
Also, how much do we get in tuition? Mr. Donovan, or Ms. Bagley? I'm just curious, what's the intuition that we're getting? I know we don't make money off of it. It pays the costs, basically, because we're not allowed to make... Have profits. We can have surpluses, but we can't have profits because of a government.
Are you asking specifically for Brentwood?
I'm asking for the programs, basically, it would be Franklin Street, the preschool, and Brentwood.
It varies by student based upon their IEPs.
Okay. Can we get some kind of numbers on that, the intuition coming in? That's important. And you said few students are aging out of Brentwood.
Oh, no. I'm sorry. They were aging out of the out-of-district.
Out of the out-of-district. Okay. How many students do we have in out-of-district right now?
Currently, we have 63.
63 out-of-district. And are any of these students that are out-of-district court-appointed, that the courts have sent them out-of-district? Because I know that at one time, we had to leave X amount of spots open because of court cases. Is that still true?
Some of them are, yes. Some are out-of-district budgets, include students whom we've placed out of district as well as students who have been placed out of district by court, or students who have been removed from their homes from Nashua and are placed in other towns in foster care.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Darling.
So, you had mentioned that the cap right now, due to the number of teachers, is 25. If we... Like, if you were to go forward with getting the teachers that are up on the slides, would that change the number, the capacity?
That's our hope. We... That's... Yes. As we move forward, that... We're always planning to try and grow the number of students that we have there. We also, because it's considered a therapeutic setting, we take into account many different factors, including the current student population when looking at increasing our numbers of students. But as we increase our number of teachers, we have the ability to provide smaller classes for our students. So, yes, with an additional teacher, we will be able to increase our student caseload.
Lovely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Lampier? I'll come back to you, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. That's fine. Do you contract with an audiologist now?
We do. We have on a much smaller basis. One of our current teachers of the deaf has time in her schedule to provide the hands-on consultation for the hearing assistance. But the caseload is growing, and she plans to retire soon. And she has the specific skill set.
So, you want a salary for a whole full-time audiologist? Or I'm not sure how it works to contract with them.
We have an agency that we've brought in, and we've worked with since 2016. This is just a larger contract with that same agency. So, it is a state-licensed audiologist, but it's not somebody who would be on our staff.
How many hours a week would they spend in the school?
Hold on one second. They are expecting, well, 152 hours for the year. But again, it's based upon students' IEPs. And it's... And we, you know, if we have to increase or decrease the number of hours, it's based upon IEPs.
So, right now, it's a lot less than 152 hours?
Yes. I think it's like 40 hours for the year right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, I had another question, actually. The contracted services, does that include like physical therapists and OTs and stuff like that that come in?
Yes.
Do you have... Do they move from school to school as they're needed? How does that work?
Our OTs and PTs are assigned to schools based on the needs of the students. So, at the beginning of the school year, our head OT and our head PT review caseloads and determine how many days each therapist will be assigned to a school.
What's the caseload around for each one of them?
It varies, quite honestly. Some of our OTs work five days a week, some of them work one day a week. So, it just depends on the OT or the PT. Our PTs have much lower numbers than our occupational therapists. We also have fewer physical therapists in the buildings.
Do you have anyone in the district who's experienced with communication, augmentative communication devices? Is there anyone that comes in for that?
We do. We contract with Boothby Therapy Services for an AAC specialist. She comes once a week and meets with our teams and works with our students who require AAC, provides consultation to the classroom staff and to the team working with the student, as well as does AAC evaluations.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. I don't see anybody else, so go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I just want to go back to the Brentwood again. How many classes do we have right now at Brentwood?
We currently have... We offer 24 classes during the sixth-period day.
Twenty... Say that again?
24 classes during the sixth-period day.
24 classes. And how many students are in the class?
It varies from class to class, but usually, three to four, sometimes five.
Three to five students. And how long has the Brentwood been in Nashua from Merrimack?
Oh, it's been in Merrimack for a very long time. We acquired it in... Jan Martin was here, so...
But it's... It moved... This is the fourth year it's been in Nashua as opposed to being up at the facility in Merrimack.
Yeah. I think it's been six years since we've had...
Yeah. We had it up there for two or three years.
Okay.
So, we've sort of owned the program, so to speak, for about seven, I think. This is probably the seven.
Seven years we've owned program.
Right. Because we rented that facility over on Amherst Street for a couple of years.
And how is our program... Because it's been a while. Do we have basically the same program that they had in Merrimack?
Yes. I would say it's more enhanced. We've increased our therapeutic aspect. We added a full-time social worker and a full-time guidance counselor to the staff in recent years. So, we have more support staff in place. We also have school psychology support there that was not previously available to those students.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. I had a question, and now I have just lost it, so give me one second to get it back. Oh, it was about out-of-district costs. If I recall, the last few years, out-of-district has been going up $1 or $2 million a year. And you're only asking for $100,000, which is a lot less than that. So, why are we asking for 10% of what the usual increase is?
Do you like to answer that?
Sure. As Marcia had mentioned earlier, we're down in the number of out-of-district students, which is a good thing. But we had been running... The numbers had been running about 6.7 million in total. But that was with about 85 to 95 students. So, we had some age out. We had fewer go-out, especially the last couple of years. So, even though the cost per program for out-of-district has risen significantly for some of those programs...
Right.
There's fewer total students, so that's the main reason.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And just to piggyback off that, is that because we had a drop of students needing intensive services, or because there was a drop-off on the part of DCYF?
I think both. When we came back to in-person learning, for a long time, it was only special ed students in the buildings. And then, with the addition of everybody else, it's a very different landscape when you have a full school full of students. And DCYF calls were not happening as often because everybody was home and the teachers weren't laying eyes on students. So, I think it's a combination of both. Also, what's happened to us recently for out-of-district is we all just get a letter saying, "Oh, by the way, our costs are going up by X number percent." And Mr. Donovan turns bright red. But those are some of the things that we really don't have control over as well. So, we're hoping that $100,000 will get us closer to our number. But we don't, unfortunately, we don't know when out-of-district schools will raise their rates like they have been.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Giglio. Go ahead.
So, I want to be optimistic here, and I think what I'm seeing also is that our programs that we've increased here in our system have helped us keep people from having to be referred outside.
That's very true. Yes, we have. We've increased the number of programs to support our students, as well as the resources that we have within our district. Really, sending a student to an out-of-district setting is considered most restrictive. So, we try not to go that far because we want our students to be within their least restrictive environments.
That's good news. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Claffey.
May I make a motion to approve the special education budget?
Not yet. So, typically, we do all of the presentations, and then, we do public comments, have a public hearing. And then, once we've heard from the public, then we start making the motions. So, while I tend to want to give special ed as much money as we can, I think we should let the public have their data, share their thoughts first. So, any opposition to that? Nope. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Claffey? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bagley. And thank you to the entire special education team for coming. We appreciate it. So, great. Thanks.
Can I say something about this before we end? It doesn't really have anything to do with budget, but you're all here. I just want to commend the work you guys did during the pandemic. It was fantastic. I got to sit in at a couple of remote IEP 504 meetings just because the people I work with have to be supervised with their electronics. And I saw some fantastic Zoom work done. I saw parents with English-speaking learners whose needs joined in with the special ed stuff, and it was just a fantastic collaboration. I really want to commend you guys on doing what you did and then coming in with a budget that doesn't scream, "Oh, dear." So, thank you.
Thank you.
And one other thing. And one other thing about this group, they are the current title holders of the trivia challenge in Central Office.
Oh, wow.
It won't last much longer, but.
And I believe Ms. Bagley is the special ed director of the year for the state. So I throw that out there. Okay. And I see there's a change on our agenda. ELL is not joining us this evening. Is that correct? Or they are?
They're not here this week. They'll be here next week.
Okay.
And tried to allow time for the meeting after this.
Great. And also the umshoe band concert that starts in half an hour. So just mentioning that. Oh, my goodness, yeah. So next I have curriculum. Yes? Okay. Welcome, Dr. Sarfati.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. I can't promise to be as skilled as Marcia. I know she was practicing in her office all afternoon. She was. No, thank you for having me here. And just like Marcia, I really want to just take the time to thank our teachers. This has been quite a year for all of our teachers, administrators, our paraprofessionals, our food service workers, all of our support staff, and they have done a remarkable job. We've been having meetings with the principals for the last two weeks. And one of the questions that Dr. McKinney asks all of the principals is, how are the kids doing? And in every single school, we're seeing just tremendous growth. And obviously, that's a result of the work that the teachers and the paraprofessionals are doing. So just want to kind of highlight that and say thank you to them. All right, here we go. Yes, that is Mrs. Fulton in her Groundhog costume.
I love her.
And as you can see, Nashua really and truly is a special place. We have a principal who wears tights and calls himself Unity Man. In our school district, we serve approximately 10,500 students who range from grades three to eight in our preschools and all the way through grade 12. We have approximately 1,050 teachers and approximately 405 paraprofessionals. 374, excuse me, of those individuals serve special education students. We have 61 administrators and/or directors in our district. And our budget supports all curriculum, instruction, assessment, and professional development. And when it comes to our curriculum, we support all the content areas and all of the unified arts. And our instruction is for all of our students, along with a multi-tiered system of support. And certainly, we want to be able to use assessment data so that we can inform our practice, so that we can help to accelerate student learning. And when it comes to our professional development, we're very committed to offering ongoing, sustained, high-quality professional development and giving teachers input into the professional development that's going to be applicable to what they do every day. So our objectives for the 2223 year are really ongoing objectives. You know, again, we've had quite a year this year, and I like to think that we're approaching some semblance of normalcy. And so what we want to do is we want to continually invest in our early learners. We want to make sure that we are providing early intervention for all of our students so that when they come to our schools, they're ready for success. And we measure that success based on their cognitive, social, emotional, and physical growth. When it comes to our curriculum, we want to have aligned curriculum. We want to make sure that we're incorporating the research of growth mindset. We believe in the power of yet. Maybe our students aren't demonstrating proficiency yet, but we believe that every single student can get there, and that's very important. We also know that we need to provide levels of support and entry points for every single one of our learners. And we need to make sure that we're challenging all of our learners, including those who are our highest achievers. When it comes to our instruction, we want to make sure that our Tier One, our core instruction is high-quality so that we can hopefully eliminate some of the need for targeted intervention or more modified intervention. When it comes to our assessments, again, we want to make sure that we are continuously assessing students, but we want to be really mindful about the assessments that we administer. We want to make sure that the data that we yield is going to help us in our practice. And we also, again, want to make sure that we are attending to the needs of our teachers when it comes to professional development. So we have some really amazing things that are happening with our youngest kiddos. Some of the great things that we've brought in this year include our partnership with the YMCA. We have the Superhero Training Academy. Our principals came to us and they said, hey, you know what? I have five-year-olds, six-year-olds in my school. They've never been in a school setting before. They don't really know how to be students. We need to help and support them. There are some traits that we want to help them grow, and we need your help to do that. And so what Dr. McKinney and I did is we reached out to our community partner and we let them know what we were dealing with. And they said, we have a great program for you. And if you haven't had a chance to learn about the Superhero Academy, I definitely encourage you to reach out to our schools who have the Superhero Training Academy in their buildings because it's really unbelievable. Kids wear capes, they have masks, and they're learning to develop those amazing skills that we want to see in our learners. We also are committed to continuing our partnership with our friends 21st Century, YMCA. We want to make sure that we continue our Power Scholar program. Last year, we saw amazing results. Joe Manzoli came here and he shared the academic results with us. And essentially, what that data informed us is that students who participated in Power Scholars were much less likely to suffer from learning loss. And in fact, we had many students who had tremendous gains in the areas of reading and also in math. Right now, we are planning with our principals for blast-off to kindergarten. I have to definitely give a shout out to Sherri Fulton, who's been working with me and working with our principals to figure out what they need in their schools, what their programs are going to look like, and how they're going to address the unique needs of all the students. We certainly are going to continue with our Title I preschool. Amazing things are happening there. We have some incredibly dedicated teachers at that school, and I want to make sure that I call that out in all of our programs, for sure. There's more text there, but I just really wanted to highlight the super amazing things that I'm really proud of. So there's a lot going on when it comes to our curriculum. In the area of English Language Arts, we're really committed to helping to build foundational literacy skills for our learners. We know that research informs us that we have to teach children the code. They have to learn how to read so that when they are decoding texts, they're learning how to sound words out, they're learning how to make sense of letters that are put together, and it helps them when they are trying to tackle increasingly sophisticated text. We, in order to do that, we brought in foundations a couple of years ago, and we're continuing to offer professional development for teachers in grades K through 2. They're doing an amazing job implementing foundations, but because of COVID, they probably didn't get as much support as they should have had. So we're definitely addressing that right now. And we're also committed to implementing foundations for grade 3 for all of our learners. Right now, some of our schools, especially some of our title schools, do have foundations for grade 3 in their schools, and they're seeing tremendous results. When it comes to our middle school, really excited to get our steering committees back because we want to hear from teachers about what our middle school teachers need when it comes to continuing to create a scope and sequence, when it comes to the resources that we have, evaluating our resources, and making sure that what we have in front of us meets the needs of our learners. When it comes to our high school ELA teachers, we're really looking to make sure that we have that vertical alignment. We're looking to make sure that students who come to us in the ninth grade have a smooth transition and are prepared for the increasing rigor of grades 10, 11, and 12 so that we can prepare them for college and career. And again, we want to get our steering committees back in order. We need the input from our teachers so that we can make sure that we're doing right by everybody in our school district. In the area of mathematics, we are continuing to use aligned materials. We use Eureka Math. We have to purchase consumables for our students. We also have to renew our licenses for our teachers so that they can access the materials from the digital suite. We want to make sure that we are providing support for our teachers so that their math instruction is as strong as it can be. Additionally, this year, we brought ANAT for grades K-2. ANAT is an assessment tool that we use. ANAT also offers incredible professional development. We have started to offer that professional development to our teachers. Many have taken us up on that offer, and the feedback is incredibly positive. We want to continue to support our teachers so that they can use our assessment data, but also, not just that, beyond just learning about our assessments, we want to make sure that they are supported when it comes to their Tier One instruction. I will tell you that our elementary math coach has been using visual cluster cards with our youngest learners, and she's offered professional development for our teachers. And what visual cluster cards do is they help students with subitizing. And essentially, what that means is rather than like counting, you know, like counting numbers or counting objects to come up with numbers, you just recognize what that number is, just kind of like when you have a deck of cards. That's essentially what those cluster cards look like. But we're looking for that automaticity so that when students see a group of six, they know right away it's a group of six. And I can say that that professional development that's being led by Meg Duprat has been really well-received, and I see teachers using those cluster cards in their classrooms. We want to make sure that we expand that opportunity to all of our teachers and our students at the elementary level. We also use Zern as a supplemental math resource that is directly aligned with the scope and sequence of Eureka Math. We currently use Zern in our elementary school, and we want to expand that at the middle school level. And so that's one of the things that we have in our budget this year. And again, when it comes to our high school, we're looking for vertical alignment. We're looking to make sure that, you know, we have students who are coming to us in those upper grades. There has to be a process and a procedure for acceleration. We have to be able to identify with certainty where the unfinished learning is so that we can meet our students where they are and then move them to grade-level proficiency so that they can be ready for college and career. In the area of science, I will tell you that this year, we had our grade 5 implementation of Amplify Science. Students are loving it. It's amazing. Great things are happening, and I want to credit Monica Tino for all of her work with all of our elementary, our grade 5 teachers. We also, next year, we're planning to implement grades 3 and 4 of Amplify Science. One thing I just want to call out is that Monica created lesson plans and was able to secure resources. For any teacher who is interested in piloting grade 4 Amplify Science this year, completely voluntary, you know, in a year where teachers have so much on their plates, I can't tell you the number of teachers who reached out to her and said, you know what? I see what's happening in my colleague's classroom in fifth grade. I want to bring that to my classroom. And so during our in-service day, well, that work kind of started at the beginning of the year with many teachers, and then more kind of jumped on the wagon and said, hey, Monica, I want to do that in my classroom, too. But during our in-service day in February, Monica offered a workshop for our grade 4, I mean, our grade 4 teachers, rather, to help them with the implementation of Amplify Science. And I want to emphasize, this is before we're officially implementing Amplify Science. And I believe if it wasn't all of our grade 4 teachers, it was almost every single one of our grade 4 teachers who elected to attend that professional development. It was a full-day training. And again, they're bringing those practices into their classrooms. So I just want to, I really just want to commend those teachers who are going out of their way to make sure that they bring those practices and GSS into their classroom. When it comes to the middle school, you know, we're still, we are still making sure that our work is aligned to the next-generation science standards. We have Amplify Science at our middle school level. We want to be able to convene our steering committees again so that we can hear from our science team, how is Amplify Science going? What are you seeing when it comes to achievement in your classrooms? At the high school, again, I think that, you know, this ongoing professional development for next-generation science standards and kind of what that looks like in our classrooms, because we all learn science one way, right? And even though these standards are not new, they're still new to us. We're still learning, what do these things look like in our classroom? So when we move over to social studies, I think social studies is definitely an area where we need to do a lot more work in the elementary school. In the age of assessments, we are focusing so heavily on ELA, on math, and sometimes social studies goes by the wayside, and that's something that we want to reverse. We know that building content and building vocabulary helps students to become stronger readers, and that's something that we're committed to doing. At our middle school level, Allison Martinez is doing a wonderful job working with teachers and helping them to make sure that they have common alignment and they have assessments that help to, again, inform their practice, but also help us to evaluate the materials that we have. I think it's really important to continuously evaluate the materials and resources that we put in teachers' hands because if we don't give them the highest-quality resources, it makes their jobs a lot more difficult. And at the high school, again, continued vertical and horizontal alignment across the grades. So all of our instruction should be high-quality for every single learner. All of our instructions should be research-based in all of our general education classrooms. Tier One instruction, I just want to call out the difference between Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three instruction. Because what we have here in our district is we have, well, we're hoping to have a multi-tiered system of support for our students, and we want to make sure that we're getting better at that. What does that look like in our classrooms? And how can we continue to meet the needs of all of our kids? When it comes to Tier One instruction, it's that core instruction, what happens every single day in every single classroom in every single content area. And again, as I stated earlier, making sure that we strengthen our Tier One instruction circumvents the need for, or it lessens the need for more intervention for students because we're going to be able to meet their needs when it comes to our core instruction. Tier Two support is targeted intervention for our learners. It's targeted. That's when teachers identify, okay, we have a child who has unfinished learning in this area of math, and we very systematically and intentionally offer intervention for that particular student. Tier Three instruction applies to, hopefully, 5% or less of our student body. That's really when we have a modified curriculum for our students, but that would be rare cases. Most of our students who are receiving intervention will be receiving Tier Two intervention. And I just want to call out over to the right, those are some comments. We actually asked some teachers for some feedback about our Amplify Science. And just give you a second. One of the teachers said, my students love the kinesthetic, visual, and online models that we create in earth science. They're gathering evidence from multiple investigations that are simple and effective. They're having scientific discussions in small groups and working together to solve problems. It's my favorite part of the day. That was an elementary teacher. Pretty amazing stuff. So, you know, I want to beat a dead horse because I keep talking about assessment and what that means. And again, we want to make sure that we are mindful. We want to make sure that we're not just administering assessments for the sake of administering assessments. We need to make sure that the data that we're collecting paints a picture, tells us a story, and then helps us to get better at what we do, which is serving all of our students. We're also using Aspen X2 for our, to input our elementary grades. And ultimately, our goal is to use Aspen as sort of one-stop-shop for all of our elementary data. And that includes our common assessment data, reporting data. And when it comes to our report cards, we want to be able to use Aspen so that all of our parents can access all of the students' grades in Aspen and be able to receive report cards through that method of communication. We are very excited to hopefully get back to steering committees very soon. And that's work that we're going to be doing in all of the content areas. So back to PD. One of the things that we did, I'm not going to kind of bore you with this slide right here, but that is actual professional development, and Ann Price was leading that professional development. Great job, Ann. I just want to tell you, so one of the things that we did was we surveyed some teachers. We had 71 respondents. I know that's not a great response, but that's what we got. We got 71 respondents across 16 of our schools. And the teachers who responded to the survey indicated, excuse me, that the areas that they would like to have professional development in are, what we did was we basically made buckets. And so those buckets include literacy, social-emotional learning, address- addressing mental health, mental illness, and those associated disorders, and then also professional development in math. And so with our coaches, we brought our coaches in, elementary and math coaches. We've talked to our leads in our, in our content areas and we're working. One of the things that I did on Monday was I worked with the curriculum committee so that we could pass some partnership, we could pass some requests for partnerships with some of our providers so that we can address the needs of our teachers. And again, I just want to emphasize, this is a collaborative effort and getting those steering committees together will be so helpful because we'll be able to know exactly what our teachers are looking for. One of the things I also want to call out is, I sent out a survey a couple of months ago and I asked teachers if they were interested in learning more about dyslexia and what that looks like, how do we identify it, and what can we do to help our students? And I'll tell you, there were probably about 400 people who responded to that survey and they said, "Yes, please, I want to know more about that." And as a, as a middle school English teacher by trade, when I had students who had, who had reading challenges, this is not something that I was ever trained to be able to identify. I think, you know, I think a lot of us think that teachers know all of this information and if, if it's not something that they learned in school and they never had a reason to learn it in practice, we need to make sure that we are helping them so that they can be informed when it comes to their practice. So just a little bit more information about the priorities that teachers identified and we're going to continue to gather that data so that we can make sure that we are addressing those needs. So in summary, our total operating budget that we're looking for is $617,994. We have other funding sources, Title II really is meant for professional development and Title IV is, I'm going to call it Technology and Innovation. It looks like there's a large sum of money when it comes to both of those title grants, but I will tell you that a significant portion of both of those grants are used for salaries. So we don't have access to that full amount. That's why it's really important that when we do offer professional development and we do spend those funds, it's, we're very intentional about that. And just one more thing I want to call out, when it comes to our increases, the greatest increase, excuse me, the greatest increases that we have are related to educational supplies. And when we talk about educational supplies, those are things like the math consumables, those visual cluster cards that I talked about with subitizing, foundations consumables, mystery signs consumables. And then also at the middle and high schools, they're really, really working on their math practices and they want to be able to bring whiteboards into their classrooms for all of their students so that they can practice some of the techniques that they've been learning about in professional development opportunities that they've been provided. Additionally, another increase that we're seeing is in subscriptions. The subscriptions, the subscription costs in some areas have gone up dramatically. But then also, as I stated earlier, we're bringing ZERN to the middle school level and right now we only have it at the elementary level. So that's, that accounts for some of the increase. And then additionally, we're also looking for books. So there is an increase in that area. And when it comes to books, we're looking for middle school books, high school social studies texts, high school ELA texts, and then some supplemental books for our teachers. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Did you say what the middle school books are?
Yeah, so they're math, they're looking for math books.
Math books, okay. Okay, Ms. Lampier?
So my question is that as we're going through this, it seems like there's a lot of professional development for math and English and science, but there isn't any for the social studies teachers. And I feel like the social studies teachers, especially with the laws that have been passed at the state level, they really need some kind of support right now. Is there anything available for them specifically?
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more. So I have been recently connecting with Allison Martinez, the social studies coach at the middle school level, and I've been, I've been speaking more to the folks at the high school level. I absolutely agree with you. I don't know what, I'm going to be honest, I don't know what that looks like yet until we bring our steering committees together. I don't want to assume what our social studies teachers need, but you're absolutely correct. That's definitely an area that we need to support.
Can I just ask who's on the steering committees? What are those?
I'm sorry?
Who's on the steering committees? I don't know how that works.
Absolutely. So there are a number of representatives on the steering committees. So it's teachers, administrators, coaches. I would participate as well. Mr. Parker would participate. Everybody would be, would come to the table.
Okay, thank you.
Just at the beginning of the year, there were a series of administrators that were trained and went to a webinar on the divisive concepts. And then a department meeting was held at the beginning of the year for teachers in the middle and the high school to go over that. And so that was one of the trainings that were there. But I hear what you're saying in regards to the number of legislative changes, there is more support to be offered for our teachers.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the social studies teachers know that the administration is behind them and is looking out for them and wants to help them any way that you can.
Absolutely.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Back in October, excuse me, we showed that we had 10,138 students and now we have 10,562 students. Is that correct?
That's the most updated number that I have, yes.
Okay. And so that's an additional 424 students that we got in the district.
So I can't, I don't recall what the number was at the beginning of the year, but I know that as of a week ago, the number that I have here in this presentation is the number that we have according to our, our student information system.
Okay, I'm requesting to find out how many students we had from the beginning of the year to now, when we started, the exact number.
Are you looking for the number that was submitted to the state in October?
Yes, please.
Okay. And then the number as of?
Yeah, as of right now that we have. And also, what I'm looking to find out, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask, I would like to know how many, what's our class sizes in all the schools?
I mean, the class, the class sizes vary from school to school. It depends on, it depends on the number of students enrolled in the schools and certainly the number of students determines how big the class sizes are. I can't tell you exactly how many students are in each class.
I'm asking for the information if we can get that.
So.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
So we'll be bringing enrollment information, what you're looking for at the next budget meeting.
Okay.
Along with that, we'll bring the, the two pieces of information you asked around enrollment, the differences in the numbers.
Okay. And then she was just asking about class sizes. And Ms. Johnson, did you want like the smallest and then the largest class size? Or do you want literally every classroom in the district?
Every classroom.
Oh, goodness.
I'd like to see where, well, I'd like to see where we are in the schools.
Okay.
You know, how many kids we have, how many students we have in the classrooms. Are we at a 24-student classroom or are we at a 14-student class? I'd just like to see where the numbers are because compared to where we've been in the histories of our numbers, we used to do a five-year lookout.
Mm-hmm, we have that.
Okay. And over these, these years, we have never really increased, we've decreased. So now I'm kind of seeing where, if we're not going up to 12, if we started at 12,000 and we're down to 10,000 over five, six, seven years, I'd like to see, you know, because we're spending more money for less students, then I have to be able to rationalize this. More money, less students, are we having less in the classroom?
I also would like to point out that since the pandemic, a lot of the costs have increased when it comes to shipping, materials. The costs have significantly increased. There were times when we received a, an invoice or, you know, a proposal from the beginning of the year and then in a couple of months, those costs changed.
I know. Every time I go to the gas station.
Yep.
It's either up or it's down a little bit, but it, we're not at that $1.87 a gallon anymore.
I don't think it's ever going to get back there, Ms. Johnson.
It just might. Keystone Pipeline. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. McKinney, did you have your hand?
Yes. So let's just start with the information we'll be bringing next week. And if there's more questions, we can bring further information to the subsequent meetings.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Claffey?
Just a question about the survey. And I don't, this is not meant to be a criticism, but if over 90% of teachers don't respond, how is this, was the timing? You think it was the timing or?
It may be. And I think we have to continue doing that. Like I said, I did reach out regarding dyslexia and I know that that was like a hot-button thing. But I think in order to get people, more people to respond, I think they need to see that we're being responsive to the people who are reaching out. If people are saying, "I need professional development in X, Y, and Z," and we provide that, then other people will realize we're not just arbitrarily looking for the information. We actually want to do something with it.
In addition, the Professional Development Master Plan charges the PDMP, you know, as a former teacher, with the responsibility of surveying the teachers, having input into PD. And the lack of participation this year due to the contract certainly inhibited the ability to get the information out. So we had to start somewhere, but we'll certainly reengage those groups and get participation back and see what teachers are looking to have for PD going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Lampier?
So, I'm sorry, I have another question. I was looking at the breakdown on the first page and it said the fiscal year '21, the actual was $832,000. And then it went way down for '22. I figured that's because of the pandemic.
Yep.
But it's, the '23 is still a lot lower than '21. I wasn't sure why. Is that because the Esser funds are going to cover some of the expenses or?
No. So I will tell you that there was, there was a significant amount of books, textbooks that were purchased that year. And I believe that the district received extra funds in fiscal year '21 to purchase those books.
Oh, okay, I see. So, and then when it says increase, decrease, it says there's a 16.6% increase. I mean, it's a large amount, but it doesn't really seem fair when you're comparing it to the pandemic year when you couldn't even have kids in school. So I just, I just thought that was worth, worth mentioning.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, you mentioned the Esser funds. There will be curriculum purchases in the Esser funds there. So some of that, some of the items that we didn't purchase, we will purchase that way.
Okay. Anyone else?
All right, I have three quick questions. Two quick questions. And the first one is iReady. It like disappeared over the pandemic. Is it gone now? iReady?
I'll let, I'll let Dr. McKinney.
It was a hot-button issue for years and years and years. And then the pandemic happened and it like fizzled and I didn't hear anything about it this year.
So a decision was made to not continue with iReady because it doesn't align with the math curriculum that we use. And that's why we decided for a different assessment system for the younger learners, K-2, and then Grades 3 to 8, we decided to use the state assessment system. We talked about this at one point. It's free. It aligns to the state assessment that the kids take. We actually had some meetings today that it gives a good window into, if you take it in the fall, what the kids have to be ready to take at the end of the year for the grade level standards. So we use that three times a year in lieu of iReady.
Right, great. Because the kids were having a ridiculous number of assessments that weren't, I just, I don't know how much iReady-informed practice.
There are always ongoing discussions around the amount of testing versus the amount of teaching. So it's, I don't know if we'll ever get a unanimous decision on that one, but we are working on trying to find a fine balance.
Okay. Let's never speak that word again then. And then the second question I have is regarding some of the PD that is being planned. And I'm sure it's part of the PDMP and you'll have to talk to the steering committees once they come back.
Yep.
But we have this Department of Justice, ELL PD requirement.
Yep.
And so how are we balancing that, which is very important? I mean, we can all agree whether the Department of Justice said we had to or not. Getting some more training on ELL services is very important for all of our staff. How are we balancing that with the PD for Tier 2 and Tier 3 targeted instruction?
Yep. So Bob, Bob Jobin and I, we've been working really closely with our partner for the ELL PD and also with all of our facilitators who are helping us to basically run this professional development for our staff. We talked about a better plan for next year. We have a certain number of hours in terms of training that we have to meet.
Right. And only so many hours available. They're close.
So what we'd, what we'd like to do, rather than using all of our early release days, what we'd like to do is really focus on an In-Service Day so that we can make up most of those hours. We can deliver the professional development with most of the hours that we're required to meet. And then during those half-days, we'll be able to, again, offer more targeted, targeted support for our teachers based on their content area. So it's more meaningful, but what I, what we're really hoping to do is apply the learning that teachers get with regard to serving our English learners and kind of integrating that into the PD for all of the core classes and all of the allied arts.
Right, that sounds a little bit more engaging.
Yep.
Okay. And then, oh, I did have three allied. And then the last question I had was regarding the books. So math is still using big, heavy textbooks or like workbooks or?
So what, what the middle school is looking for with regard to math is, they're looking for, they're actually looking to use some open, open source materials. But they need to have teacher additions and so they're looking for teacher additions to get in teachers' hands.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. It just, it's shifted so much over the last several years. Anyone else on curriculum? No? All right, thank you so much, Dr. Sarfdi.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't have anything else for today on the list. I know Mr. Donovan gave us the items that went in Section 2 of our packet and then also Section 12. Mr. Donovan, I don't believe you were expecting questions on that this evening, right? I can't read it.
No, no, certainly not.
Okay. All right. So if there's nothing else for tonight for budget, then I propose we adjourn this meeting so that we can start our special meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Bishop. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned at 7:14 PM.
Welcome back, everybody. I am going to be starting the Special Board of Education meeting. It is Wednesday, March 25, 2022. It is 7:15. We just wrapped up our budget meeting for the night and we're switching over into this. Can we start off with roll call?
Yes, Ms. Darling?
I am still here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Im is not here this evening. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
We also have Dr. McKinney, Dr. Sarfdi, Mr. Donovan. And that is it for our guests this evening in the circle.
Thank you.
Apparently not.
Oh.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bolton?
Not yet. Attorney Bolton is here. Do we need a non-public? I invited Attorney Bolton here in case we had any questions about the contract. I was hoping everybody had reviewed it. If we have questions, does anybody want to go into non-public?
I'd like to.
Okay, I move to go into non-public under RSA 91A32. Wait, where did they put it? E, negotiation. Okay. RSA 91A23E. And wait, I made it? And then who seconded it?
I will.
Okay. Bishop. All right, on the motion to go into non-public, Ms. Darling?
Aye. We could do all the.
I can. All in favor of going into non-public?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we're going into non-public at 7:17. So we're back in non-public. It is 7:51, 7:52. And we, I want to say two things before we get to the vote.
I have a question. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Are we voting to seal the minutes or no?
Yeah. Can we get a motion to seal the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Darling. And the time is 7:53. Okay. Okay, under RSA 91A332 that the minutes would render our proposed action ineffective. Okay. And then, all in, oops, all in favor of sealing the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Okay. So, passed. Okay, that's fine. I don't know what that thing is for.
Okay, so before we get to the meat of our meeting that I know everybody has been waiting for, I need to make two statements. The first one is after a lot of discussion with city council, we have been advised, unfortunately, I know there's some disappointment on this end, but given Mr. Claffey's retired teacher status and his ability to collect benefits from the city currently, the advice is to abstain from voting. You can certainly announce your support as a citizen, as a national resident, but the advice is to not vote, to prevent a conflict of interest. Do you want Mr. Bolton to speak on, is that, can I ask you to kind of say what we said before? I know. I just, I know, I wanted to be clear because I know Mr. Claffey is very dedicated to the people that support him, and I know he wants to make sure that everyone understands where this information is coming from and that we are not, we're not looking to silence him, but we're looking to bolster, you know, the strength of our board and not have it be undermined by a silly nuisance, which this kind of sounds like it is. But go ahead.
Well, there's a provision in the proposed contract that provides that a retired teacher of more than 20 years who is receiving a retirement benefit from the New Hampshire Retirement System will have a portion of the health insurance premium paid 20% plus 3% per year for each year in additional, each year over 20 years. And that creates a benefit that Mr. Claffey would be entitled to under the contract. It's a direct benefit to him, even if he, for whatever reason, has other options and chooses not to take advantage of it, it still is an option available and provides a benefit to him. That makes it a conflict.
Thank you. The other piece that I want to say before we go into the vote for the teachers' contract is, I know this was a long, hard fight between everybody, and I think everybody went to the table with their best interest in mind. I mean, you know, we do pay-per-view for, you know, WWE and boxing matches. We love to see a fight happen. And I respect the toe-to-toe that happened in regards to making the contract the best that it can be. I think, you know, there was some winning and some losing, which happens in negotiations, but I want to thank our team for taking the time and doing what they were supposed to do as a negotiating team to create the best contract possible. And my sincerest thanks go out to Ms. Brown, Ms. Im, and Ms. Raymond. And I'm sure, you know, the union is getting their own accolades from their team, but I would like to acknowledge the people that had the boots on the ground during that time and really stuck their necks out for, you know, not a lot of, not a lot of anything. So we're kind of a volunteer position here, and you guys fought for what you thought was right, and we appreciate it. And I hope that we enter into every negotiation with the same amount of passion. So with that said, I would be looking for a motion to accept the, sorry, Mr. Donovan?
Should we ask the union if they approve the contract tonight?
I just assumed they did, yes. That'd be a great question. Did you guys approve the contract tonight?
Yes.
Yes. So the union has approved the proposed contract, so I would be looking for a motion to accept the proposed National Teachers Union collective bargaining agreement for today. So moved.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Darling. Thank you for waiting for me to keep up. So the motion is to, I didn't write it the same way you did, to accept the proposed.
Do we want to do this as a roll call vote?
I don't know. I think that's probably a good idea.
No, okay. We don't have to. I just wanted to clarify before we went into it.
No. I think it'll be fine because if people say no, I have to write down who they are anyways.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On the motion to accept the proposed contract with the teachers' union, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Can you ask if there are any abstentions?
I'm getting there. I have to write down Johnson's. And then abstention.
Abstain.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Claffey. Okay. Now I have to do math. All right.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, 6 to 1 to 1.
Okay. Thank you to our administration as well for undergoing that tremendous amount of work and back and forth. And I'm happy to say that we can move on into the next set of all of the work that we have to do. So thank you. I would now be looking for a.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
That's me.
Second.
Okay, Darling?
My favorite part of the night.
Seconded by Gilio. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. 8:00, and it is exactly 8:00 PM.